All right. Are we waiting for anybody else?
Um, no.
It's in. I'm going to call the Board of Trustees for the Spokane Public Library meeting on March 21st, 2023. To order. Visitors, if you would, please sign in and if anybody would like to provide public comment near the end of our meeting, there's also a signup sheet for that on the cart right behind Andrew. So I will start with our land acknowledgement. All of Spokane Public Library buildings sit on the traditional homelands before bands of the Spokane Tribe of Indians. Upper Band, Middle Band, Lower Band, and Chulilla Band. Since time immemorial, the Spokane Tribe of Indians has lived and cared for these grounds, identifying themselves as flesh of beer. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and peoples who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. May we learn from them and other stories so we may nurture the relationship of the people of the Spokane Tribe and to all those that share this land. All right. Are there any proposed changes to the adopt to the agenda? All right, hearing none, the agenda will be adopted. And now first action item, approval of the February 2023 board minutes.
So.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? I.
I.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passed. And next we have the approval of the February 2023 bills and contributions.
I move to approve the February bills and contributions in the amount of $2,756,603.62.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. And now we have the financial report.
Welcome to South Hill. So cute out there, loving all the kids. Um, so I'll start off with the library operations side for the February update and then we'll move on to the January. Also for our cash and investments trend, in February, it closed with the library's ability to pay 144 days worth of operating costs in in the available cash investment. That current balance is $6,176,050. This includes our reserve for capital in the amount of 1.2 million and it's net of our encumbrance balance, which is 236,670. For our expenditure trend, uh, this, this February, the library's operating expenses were $983,077. Of that amount, our personnel costs were 620,249. Our branch utility costs were 48,809. We also did stock up on our on our facilities cleaning supplies for the year and that that amount was 6,504. For our, you know, most of the materials purchases in February, we spent 77,329. And my apologies on the next one, the utilities um for our for our facility's storage location, we're not 15,642, it's 1,833, so a little typo there. Um, our security guard costs totaled 28,146. Uh, 46% of that amount was for central, um, we did, um, this, this covers the January security guard expenses. So I do expect that to ramp up a little bit in next month's board meeting because we we've increased our, our, our security down. So just, just kind of a heads up for that. Um, and then we also had inter-fund charges that totaled 70,972. And then moving on to business office news. So our payroll and HR volume for the work has really ramped up this year so, uh, so far since the beginning of, of the year, we have fulfilled about 16 positions. Um, our full-time equivalent of, of those 16 positions is about 12.8 FTE. In an early March, the library had um an available FT equivalent positions of 2.5, so that's really more than about two right now. We are, we are currently in the process of fulfilling that, so we will be at zero. Which is very exciting for us and you know, we're, we're doing it right with having all of our branches everything. And see how everything works, works out there. We, we do still have some people moving between branches as well and kind of getting settled. Um, also, uh, historically, our expenditure financial reports, um, that that section is broken down by service area. And um, in that area, there was a, a service title called programming. And that name has been modified now to summer reading program and it will be reflected in that going, going forward on our financials. Um, also, we have, we have seen a very large increase in our volume of purchasing card activity. We currently have a total of 25 library purchasing card users. So a, a lot of this increase is pretty expected. We've got new employees. Um, we also are, we're preparing to open the South Hill Branch, of course, and, and Indian Trail. Um, at that, I would look, like to open it for any questions related to operations before we move on to Penny.
I have a question. So it was my understanding that programming included some other programs besides summer reading program?
Yes, so we, we, um, all of our, our programming, that's, that's a year-long process and Jason really had a lot of that, but that's reflected in our public services. Your own area, okay, so that, and that, that's why I had that in the age, because I didn't want that back. That's just for the.
Okay, that makes sense.
You bet.
And the, the purchasing card, uh, is that, um, that's like a credit card? So there's 25 employees that have a credit card to spend on that, and what kind of things are purchased with?
Mostly, mostly operating supplies, um, our, our, our facility manager for a particular lot of, you know, make, uh, maintenance, things like that, fuel. Which is just those, your, your, the things of other various items that maybe you can take it as a PO for it when you need it. Yes.
And I have one more question. Do we usually stock up? At the beginning of the year on food supplies?
We stock up when we, when we're out. Sometimes it's toward the end of the year depending on budget is left, okay, it just, it really. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Nicole. Thank you. Jenny is online, the bond, the bond update.
Hello. Um, okay, so nothing to report tonight in terms of obligations executed under the special signing authority. Um, I do want to tag on to Nicole just a little bit here. She pointed out a couple areas that the business office has seen added work. But um, one area that has significantly increased for the business office is the accountability of fixed assets. When, when our branches are placed back into service, they're going in service with a much higher volume of fixed assets to track. And that falls under the accountability audit um, with our state auditors and it also isn't, there's an annual inventory requirement. And all SPL employees are responsible for safeguarding our assets. But the business office staff, um, they're charged as the gatekeepers and I, I guess I'm want to kind of sing their praises that while they're, um, they're adding work in a number of areas, this is one area that's significantly increased. Now, in the month of February, a couple of things happened in regards to fixed assets. Um, we decided to put Indian Trails assets into service on February 28th. Um, we did that so we weren't co-mingling in-service with South Hill at the same time. It's a significantly difficult process that takes a lot of um reconciliation to place the assets that have been being purchased since early 2019 and pull them into service. So we did two large upload worksheets for Indian Trail. One captured the technology and the materials handling equipment. Then we did a second upload and that accounted for all of the cost additions in the month of February for our, our in-brand, in-service branches as well as our historical purchases for Indian Trail. We'll do that same thing again for the March upload that will report South Hill. Another thing happened in February that um, I've been holding my breath on for some time. Uh, many of you know that the city of Spokane purchased a new fixed asset module. Um, unfortunately, we've been working without a fixed asset module for two years now uh, into our, entering our third year, so um, I've been working from some rather robust Excel worksheets and pivot tables. And this, the problem is that the upload worksheets that we're creating, they're not electronically loading into the system. So what I described to you as a very large job for me and also many Wong in our business office is even larger for the city account that is charged with handling this. I, so I want to first, I do want to give her Lauren Berry a call out because she's an outstanding accountant at the city who has an enormous job handling this. So she not only had to put all of our assets into the system manually, but she had to do it for everybody in this, in citywide. What made February important was that they just got July 2022 loaded into the system. Well, that is the month we placed Central into service. To give you some context, in the upload worksheet, one single asset that we report on has up to 19 fields of data that we report. We reported 446 assets in the month of July, so 8,500 fields of data. In addition to that, Minnie has to upload the invoices for every one of these purchases in a separate document software system. Here's the good news. After Lauren got everything loaded into the city system, we were able to generate the reports through July 2022 and they agreed without exception to our internal tracking sheets. So I will uh leave the asset world and shift us over to Nevada Street Development and the 24/7 kiosks. So with the board's approval last month, um, very excited about that. Um, I went to, to work right away to build out a set of accounting structure so that we can provide you financial data just as we have done for Shadle, Central, and all of the other library sites. So um, I could not get that finished by the end of February, but I'm, I'll be happy to bring that to you in, at the next meeting. And what we'll wind up doing is I'll move that um those budgets out, they're currently sitting in PMO, I showed you that uh during the year-end presentation. I'll move all that out and present that in its own new section. And uh, we'll be able to track that in the exact same way that you're accustomed to seeing. So that concludes my report. I'm open for questions.
I just have to say, just your description of the amount of data that had to be manually input is enough to give me nightmares for days to come.
Agreed.
Oh. All right, well, good job to everybody who worked on that massive project.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Penny. We're ready to move on. Uh, now we have uh the bond construction project update.
Good afternoon. Um, as you guys know, uh, South Hill opened today. You can see you're, you're in it and enjoying it. So we have finished all of the branch renovations, so that's uh very good news. Um, we are wrapping up some warranty and minor work on uh Hive and Liberty branches. Uh, I think everything at Shadle is done. Still working on some uh late changes and some closeout for the uh downhill, or excuse me, for the Central Library. And then we've been working very hard with uh, the contractor to uh finish up Indian Trail and South Hill. Um, Indian Trail, as you know, opened last week or two weeks ago. Um, there is still some shelving that uh had to be ordered and won't be installed till May, but things are going well there. And then Meridian is still has a few outstanding issues, but all in all, I think uh, it's going well there. Uh, South Hill was a little bit uh harder to uh get all those last minute things done, but uh, you could tell they're done and it looks great. Um, we do still have um a chiller to install and a book drop to install that will be done, will be done uh later this spring. Any questions?
Do I notice the reference to the chiller shipping in May? Is that kind of the latest item, the last item we're waiting for? Is there anything that's pushed out beyond that?
No, no, the chiller is the last one and it's, it's one of those horrible supply chain issue things that has slipped six times. So we're crossing our fingers because we need that chiller so you guys can have air conditioning in the summer.
All right, any other questions for Lorraine? My, in the meeting. All right, and next we have the chairperson's report and there is no report. So now we move on to the library executive director's report.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, first, welcome in person, that's a shout out to your first meeting and uh sadly to say, uh, Nathan is leaving uh the board, this will be his last meeting. Uh, so thank you, Nathan, for your years, years and years of service. Uh, your support. Uh, and you know, I've really enjoyed working with you over the past few years and you've been a huge, huge supporter uh of what we're doing here and um, appreciable. Thank you so much. We had, uh, did you want to, yeah. It's your report. Uh, we had a very successful opening, both the Indian Trail and the this morning at South Hill. So I wanted to thank both Mary and Nathan for, for kicking us off at uh those ceremonies. Uh, we need well-attended both of them. Uh, really great to see the families come out and have a good time and be part of the celebration for the work that we're doing here. Um, that's, that's awesome. It's great to be done uh with uh these seven, you know, major projects and looking forward to moving on to the, the kiosks uh in the coming months. I did want to know that um, in a very timely manner, uh, you know, the board had approved our location contracts uh last month. Uh, we run into a bit of a wrinkle with one of them and that would be uh the Veterans Hospital. So we are currently searching for another location. They asked us to pause uh and wait for a couple of years for an install and we just feel like uh we'd, we'd rather search out for a location at this point. Uh, we can reengage later uh if, if it is of, of interest. So just wanted to give you a heads up. Uh, we, that. I also wanted to note that the friends of the library will be holding their annual book sale later in April, April 27th, June 29th. Any audience here, that'll be held at the Shadle Park Library. Uh, that's where you held it last year as well, uh, very successfully. Uh, people enjoyed the free parking. Uh, they used two of the community rooms, uh, which allowed them to separate some of the collection between the youth and adult. And uh, we're looking forward to another successful sale uh in April. Uh, we continue to engage with Spokane Public Schools around uh future projects. Uh, Charis has been leading that effort with us. We're currently in talks uh around what their possible bond uh program might look like and how we might feed into that. Uh, particularly around uh a replacement for Union School, uh, which is up on Monroe, right? It's one of the choice schools, uh, very project-based, community-based learning. Um, so there, it could be something uh that I need to develop through, through there. Uh, let's see. Uh, programming-wise, uh, we are starting next month. We're going to change how we're doing the reporting for that. We offer a whole lot of programs, public programs uh for the public and it just makes sense. I think that we're at that point. So we're working out on that separately and Jason Johnson will be doing that much better than I do um, in future months. Um, so looking forward to bringing Jason into the fold for that. Um. See, collections, everything was going fine with opening day collections, uh, staff, uh, couldn't thank them enough. You know, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of unpacked boxes uh over the past few months. I think it was 900 alone with South Hill. Um, and it's amazing, they, they, you know, they should. Uh, our staff, staff, start spotlight, went to Ashley Locke, Amanda Miller, Pat Cuddleston, Paul Miller, Samantha Murphy, and Abe Green. Uh, is one of our security guards. We had a, a really heightened uh incident at the Central Library earlier in February with a, a customer that was uh experiencing a mental health crisis and they evacuated the building. Uh, the police showed up, helped us out with that situation and they just did a fantastic job uh in maintaining staff safety and public safety and actually was right here, so thank you. And on the night, I talked to Ashley with Amanda and she's so calm, like the whole thing collected and um, I really appreciate you. Um, Nicole had mentioned the staffing. We talked about a lot of sort of staff shuffling over the past couple of weeks, so we're still sort of settling in uh with that. Uh, I continue to hold my monthly office hours at each of the locations and I, the staff, like, appreciate that, you know, presence out in, in the facilities. Um, and major upgrades also happened uh at Central Shadle Park, the Hive and Liberty Park. I think we still have a little bit wasted due to the speaker here, uh, but that's to uh engage around the hybrid meeting technology. I think we were the first users, so uh, you know, it's up, up the gate, we're the first user, we're going to find a problem with it. Uh, but uh, we'll, we'll address those uh as we're able uh and continue to tackle, we continue to tackle the safety uh issues that uh we've seen uptick in downtown. We're holding meetings with staff every, every other week to get input uh and address issues. I am putting pressure on city administration and uh city council to have downtown Spokane partnership reconvene this uh elective security meeting that used to happen prior to a shutdown of pandemic where all security crews can get together and, and have a conversation of what they're saying. Uh, I can only imagine that communication around these issues would help everyone uh deal with these things. Um, so uh, we're, we're, yes, people will be taking that one. Uh, and uh, looking forward to seeing some improvements. And it's March, so we're going to start taking on the hedge season. And then, there you are again.
Yep.
Any questions, Brian? I have one, yeah.
Given the incidents that you've had over the last several months or so, is this a bigger problem during COVID or?
I would say that we see an uptick in COVID. Snowing, uh, certainly, um, we're starting to do deeper dive in some of those incidents and trying to track them, but it's very uh, part of them, hey, this is my perception, should get an, an answer. Um, we still need to do a bit with the, like, questions. Um, certainly, we, we see an uptick in folks using the facility as this chart. Um, during.
Well, has the city and the partnership been receptive too? I mean, it sounds like you're getting cooperation.
Yes, yes, I think it's something that fell off the radar, uh, and I and I'm just living on it, I have to remember. Um, so I remind, um, so I, I, I hope that that happens and I know Charis is actually taking some initiative too and, and just trying to get whoever we can together and not waiting for DSP, so Charis is. We're, we really want to maintain the safety as much as we can for both staff. It's a huge focus for us right there.
Yeah. Zach, you have a question?
Yeah, and thanks for that. I'll add a question about that DSP safety partnership. First, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, um, I was told that DSP was reconvening those meetings and it's part of their contract that they're supposed to be doing those meetings. So um, I guess we can talk offline more if those aren't moving forward, but keep, let me know.
Will do. Thank you.
I guess you know, I, I know with the staff in downtown libraries been handling, you know, the large amounts of people that are coming and studying their behavior. Care and after, you know, that social workers there. But I, I just, I hope that um I can imagine that it would be perhaps emotionally and psychologically trying sometimes um, to have the daily
Stress.
Yeah, and I just, um, I I just hope that there are resources available for staff or that they have an opportunity to talk about it together. And I, you know, I've been probably, I, I just, I just wanted to, to say, I hope that that's going on.
So one of the benefits of having a social services manager on staff is that, it's not just for public, it's also for staff too. So it's higher is um, doing some trainings over the next few months around de-escalation and self-care. Uh, recognizing how to, you know, deal with our emotions and, and sort of the, the huge stressors uh that uh some of these experiences, so uh, we're looking forward to uh adding that to.
Good, thank you.
That's what's fair. That was going to be my question is if there's been conversation around additional training for staff. Sounds like you all did a great job in this scenario, but ongoing training and I'm wondering if even bringing in some of those groups from the city to some of those trainings would be a benefit as well in that conversation?
All right, any other questions for Andrew? Okay, now we are ready for the council liaison report. Zach, you're on.
Yeah, hey, everyone. I'm very sad that I am not there at the new library to check it out. I have to run to a 5:30 meeting, so very sad, but I will be checking it out very soon. Um, I don't really have any new updates for council stuff. Um, we've been working uh, uh, to tie into the regional or to homelessness, because that's kind of something that we're talking about. Council did approve the 90-day study, feasibility study about a regional homelessness authority. So that is moving forward with the valley and the county and we're hopeful and optimistic that we can coordinate resources uh around around the county to address homelessness, so um, that's one aspect of an update there. But happy to take any questions if anyone has questions too.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Zach.
And now we have the communications report. Samantha here?
Yep.
There she is, all right.
We now.
Yes.
Yeah.
We can hear you now.
Okay, uh, so uh, thank you for allowing me to join you virtually again. I'm homesick this time, so hopefully I get to see you all in person next month. Uh, the priority this past month has been the opening of Indian Trail in South Hill. We um coordinated the opening events as well as all of the media um coverage and we got great media coverage on both um, South Hill and Indian Trail and thanks to Alina for going in for those pre-dawn interviews uh at both locations. Um, in addition to South Hill and Indian Trail, we launched a new accessibility widget on our catalog. You can see it there. Um, if you go to the catalog, there's a little button on the bottom that says accessibility and you can click on that and get enhanced features on the, on the catalog and we'll soon be adding that on the website side of our digital experience as well. Um, we hosted a half-day communications retreat with CityComms at the Central Library. Um, we hosted a half-day communications retreat with city comms at the Central Library. That was really great to be able to connect with the city communications and just see what kinds of places that we could leverage each other's communication channels to spread the word about what we're doing at the city and as well as at the library um to our respective audiences. Um, we began work with the agency Houdini for redesign of the Spokane business website. That's a project that Mark Pond and Alina are working on together. And um we were able to receive a grant to fund that work, so that's really exciting, and I know Mark Pond has so many great connections in the community, and we're excited to give his website um a polish that matches what he brings to the community. And uh my team also presented a digital webinar this past month. It was a reprisal of what we did at the LMCC conference in Indianapolis last year, but not at the mercy of the algorithm. Control your own content um by e- with email to the Patron Point community, and Patron Point is our email vendor that we use for sending all of our customer and staff emails. So on social media, our top posts for the month on all of our channels were about the Indian Trail opening. No surprise there. I expect our top post this next month will likely be about the South Hill opening as well. That's always very popular. Um, you'll see that in this month's report, this is the first time I'm reporting on our TikTok stats, so if you recall, we added TikTok um at the end of December um in kind of a soft launch, and so we've just been slowly building our content and our following there. We've got lots of video views, just three hundred and fifty followers, but um people are enjoying the contents that's there, and I expect it to continue to grow. And finally, I just wanted to kind of skim to the bottom here and point out the earned media. As I mentioned, we had coverage um on all local um television channels about our opening um at Indian Trail, and then it's not reported in this report here since it just happened this morning, but we also did uh at South Hill as well. We had KXOY and Creme um cover us this morning, and that concludes my report. Any questions?
I have a question, but I will tell you that it's apparent from the noise that's coming from out there that her children's play area is a huge hit.
Good, I'm glad to hear that.
All right, any questions for Amanda? Thank you, Amanda. Thank you. All right, now moving on to new business, we have uh facilities truck purchase.
Thank you. Okay, um, so the Spokane Public Library's utility team are currently operating with a utility truck has far exceeded its expected useful life. Um, it was purchased in December of two thousand and six. It's a two thousand and seven, um, if we do. Um, what, what that's used for is trans- transporting um different um uh facilities, maintenance supplies, as well as equipment between each, each branch. Um, really, that, that, that initial expected life of that truck is about seven to ten years, and we're going on about seventeen, so um it's been about a hundred and ninety thousand miles. We really kind of know the technology at this point. Which is great, hoping we can do that with, with our next one. Um, so currently, we are in the process of obtaining some finalized quotes for purchasing a replacement truck that, that meets the, the needs of the library. We are using, um, we've reached out to a couple of the uh co-ops that, that exist for Washington State where cer- certain resources, um vendors basically are, are have, have, uh have a contract agreed with him, so we can get a better gu- uh government. So we can kind of go directly towards uh to, to those locations. However, we do have a little bit of a big need with our truck that might be commodifying. We're just, we're waiting on those this one. So really, that, in front of all, I have to think about that, it's straightforward. Um, and also the heads up, and in future years, we're looking at replacing all of our, our, our fleet, because it's all getting pretty outdated, but this is the one that we do need to start with for me.
Um, so I have a question. When I was reading through this, Ron, the thought I had is wondering, particularly with the plan to have uh multiple new kiosks as additional locations where we're having to take materials, if there is i- any opportunity to use excess bond funds for this type of equipment. Serving an extended footprint? Don't know. It was just something that I thought of as I was looking at the item in preparation for the meeting, and I, I don't, I don't know the answer to the question, but I'm, I'm not sure it's even you know, on your radar, but I know that there.
It, it, it is something we've just kind of talked about. As far as using the bond owners, I think that will be fully interlined with our kiosks and our, you know, different plans. I don't know if there'll be an opportunity for that. I hope we do have a very healthy fund, fund balance with the airport, and we also have a huge capital gap too. So we would definitely dip into that.
And it may uh depend on the light expectancy. Meet that.
Right.
But there could be an opportunity where at the end of this process, I don't think this. It, it is a reality.
Yeah.
Where we could take costs that were incurred for residential spaces like STA, law, and reimburse those deal the bond, which would help replenish um some operating costs, but I don't think that we're gonna be in that situation.
All right, any other questions? So moved.
Second.
It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? Right, hearing none, motion passed. And now we have the uh youth environmental programming.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm very excited to be here at the board meeting at the first day of South Hill. I have some pictures that Alina is pulling up for me, maybe. I just verbally tell you to change the slides. Awesome. No worries. I was told to take five to ten minutes to tell you about myself and the work I do at the library, so I'm gonna give a little introduction to who I am and some of the things I've been able to do since being at the library since June of last year. So I, my name is Mason. I'm the youth environmental specialist. I'm one of our uh five youth programming people on the team, and I specialize in environmental programming here at the library for kids anywhere from really three to eighteen. Um. You're good. There's a beautiful picture of me up here, but that's not necessary. Obviously, you can see me right here in front of you. Um. Well, while we wait for that, go ahead and go to the first, second slide. Thank you, Alina. I appreciate that. I'm so grateful for our very competent communications team here at the library. So, thank you. I've been working in libraries for three years. I come from Latah County before this, so I was in Spokane prior. I did a year as an AmeriCorps volunteer here doing environmental education. Um, so I have a bit of a background in both environmental science and in library services. I'm a master compostor recycler. I will soon be a master gardener, and by the end of September, I do all my volunteer hours, which I will. Um, and I'm from Maine originally by way of Wallowalla, but I've been in the West for ten years, also lived in British Columbia for a while. Next slide. So I like to say that I do place-based uh youth programming, and that's a buzz, bit of a buzzword in education right now, but the idea is my goal in my youth programming here at the library is to connect our kids to the place they live, and specifically their li- their living environment, to help kids see themselves as participants in the environment and connect with the living cycles that we're all part of. Um. My goal is to help children see themselves as participants in the natural processes and take responsibility and ownership over what's happening to their world. Um, and feel like they have power in that sense. Um, and I feel really strongly that that's one of the most important parts of library services right now in a very precarious world, specifically environmentally. I think libraries are central to forming com- uh community resilience. As the environment becomes more precarious, our connections are going to be our best um resource for survival as a species. I know that sounds kind of extreme and great, but I think it can be really fun and celebratory, strengthening our community bonds, and I like to do that through youth programming. So you can see here, we've got some kids exploring their environment in unique ways. In the middle was at our solstice celebration, where we were just talking about the cycles of the year and celebrating the darkness, remembering the light would come back. This kid holding this takeout container with what looks like balls of mud just made seed bombs, which were made out of local compost and clay and local pollinator seeds, and he was so excited to take that home and plant some seeds with his dad. Um, that would attract local bees, bats, moths, beetles, birds, et cetera. The kids on the left and the right just made a terrarium, and they learned about how succulents root. Inside their terrarium is a layer of charcoal that is analogous to the carbon content in our ground, and then they have rocks beneath the charcoal that is analogous to our aquifer, and so they learned how their aquarium, or terrarium, I mean, replicates um the cycles we live in, and just how that's a closed system that is self-sustaining. We're in a system that is self-sustaining. So place-based education is what I like to do, and um I think that gives you a sense of what that looks like. I'll go to the next slide. My goal of my programming is also that the kids, the programming exists beyond the lot, walls of the library. I hope that the children who come to my library programs continue their exploration after they've been here. When they enter the library, I'm hoping that they're feeling empowered to question, but they leave knowing where they can take those questions. So as often as possible, I like to feature community partners in my programs. That's looked like the Lands Council, Spokane County Water Resources, our solid waste departments. Just today, I had storytime this morning, then I drove to Pullman, and I filmed a wonderful video with the USDA bean curator today who runs a gene bank in Pullman, and so we filmed a video inside this bank of genes, which is just beans, drawers and drawers of beans, which looks a lot like a card catalog, and we talked about plant diversity and what genes are and why it's so important to carry biodiversity in both our plants and our communities. Um, so that's one way where I'm trying to bring I, all my programs happen six times at each library branch, um so it's hard to convince a community partner to come to a program three times, two weeks in a row. So what I've been doing is I've a, a few times now filmed a video with someone that plays at the beginning of my program, and then we do a short activity. So this time, this video will be ready in a couple of weeks. We'll grow two different types of legumes. Um, we'll compare them. They'll get to take them with them, and in the classroom, we'll have a bean in variety stages of germination, so they can learn about um rhizobius and nitrogen fixation in the soil. So as much as possible, I hope that when the kids leave my programs, they can take it further and um keep exploring. Uh, next slide. So what am I looking forward to in the future? I want to continue to expand the library's impact here in our community with more place-based media. I have shared with my superiors that my dream is to create a Mr. Rogers neighborhood here in Spokane where we feature the helpers of Spokane. The kids are, and our community are naturally curious about how the world works. Where does my trash go? Where does my water come from? How do my lights turn on, et cetera? And I think the library is uniquely situated to begin making media of some format to showcase those answers. We meet the people operating the waste-to-energy plant. We go to the river and see how the aquifer water is visible in our river, and that's why it's so cold and also so clear, and also so important to keep clean. And so that's my goal looking forward. I want to continue making more partnerships in our community and having a lot of fun here at the library. I'm very passionate about it, and I'm having a blast, so that's what I do in a nutshell. And uh, thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
You, you mentioned Mr. Rogers, and a, a lot of us who have an affinity for Mr. Rogers, but I would also have you consider Daniel Tiger, uh, because Daniel was Mr. Rogers.
Sure, and I don't mean I want to literally recreate Mr. Rogers. No, yeah, no, Daniel Tiger is how a lot of our, our modern-day kids are connecting with Mr. Rogers. Um, this wasn't in my prepared presentation, but we had a really hard week last week at Storytime from some news um that the library received, and um I had the responsibility, I suppose, of delivering that news to a lot of people who are very emotionally close to the event and were very impacted by it, and I believe that Storytime is such a joyful place, and more than literal literacy, emotional literacy, and community literacy is so important in Storytime. And um it was a very hard thing to do. Last Tuesday and Wednesday, we were very emotional at Liberty Park um to be with, you know, seventy kids and their parents grieving essentially, and um, Mr. Rogers is what guided me through it. I brought my cello. We played. It's you I like. We talked about how important and special we all are. And um, so no, I don't want to recreate Mr. Rogers, but he's such a goalpost of what um emotional genius can look like and how important kids are to our future. So, but Daniel Tiger. Great.
I, I bring that up because we have a Daniel Tiger costume character.
Any other questions?
With the short amount of time that Mason's been here, he, they already cultivated a huge following in the community. Yes. But uh, looking forward to what.
All right, um, so do we should we do the executive session now, or do we want to? So there won't be any public comment. Our next regular meeting will be April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at the Indian Trail Library. Um, and then we are going to uh go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter with Alan White here. Ten minutes will be. So we will reconvene at um by twenty-eight.
Everyone, the nice little slides.